I call this meeting of the Upsher County Commission to order. We will begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. Jackie, would you like to read the minutes from our last meeting?
Good morning. The County Commission of Upsher County, West Virginia held a regular meeting at the Courthouse standings on Thursday, August 20, 2015 at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called the meeting to your order, President or J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner, Troy Brady, Commissioner, Kerry Cutright, Commissioner, Kerry Wallace, County Administrator, Captain Perry, Assistant County Administrator, and Japhel Mink, Office Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. On motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Kerry Cutright, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of August 13, 2015, as submitted. After discussion on motion by Kerry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved a donation in the amount of $150 plus ten one-day pool passes to the Upsher County Children's Festival, scheduled to take place on September 19, 2015, as requested by the Children's Festival Committee. The donation will go towards funding the cost of the linen space, paying character appearances, bounce houses, or magician door prizes, and other event needs. Pool passes can be used for the 2016 pool season. After discussion on motion by Kerry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the resignation of Natasha Perry as administrative assistant for the Addressing and Mapping Office effective August 22, 2015. After discussion on motion by Kerry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the advertisement slash job posting for the part-time secretarial administrative position in the Upsher County Commission in Addressing and Mapping Office. Applications must be received on or before the close of business on September 8, 2015. After discussion on motion by Kerry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved request from Red Harris Upsher County Safe Structures and Sites Enforcement Board Representative to board a property cleanup concerning case number 09114-01 and authorize the president to sign correspondence to property owners. Teresa Brunner and Mary Ann McDonald, Federation of Humane Organizations of West Virginia Representatives, appeared before the Commission and provided a review of commercial dog breeding operations and the effect of puppy mills into communities. Ms. Brunner and Ms. McDonald expressed concerns about the inhumane treatment of dogs and additionally that unless counties require permits and invalid business license for breeding operations, commercial breeders may negatively impact an environment and/or economy of a community. Ms. Brunner noted that without licensing requirements, there is no way to enforce inspections or to maintain house standards. J.C. Rafferty advised that the county would need to draft an ordinance to require such license and permits. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Kerry Cutright, the Commission approved to move forward with the drafting of a commercial dog breeding ordinance. Kerry Wallace was requested to follow up. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, administrative order entered by the Honorable Jacob Ritter on August 17, 2015, regarding establishing divisions for the 26th Judicial Circuit. Two correspondence from Michael Zerilli, Vice President of Government Relations of Sequoia Corporation, and Jeremy Bonn and General Secretary of Altheis, and the updating certain information regarding the upcoming transfer of control of Sequoia, the parent of Sequoia 3 Communications to LLC DVA Suburban Communications. Three correspondence from Governor Earl Ray Tomlin approving the Justice Assistance Grant Award to the Upsher County Commission in the amount of $20,000. Funds will provide one prevention resource officer at the Buchanan Elementary School. Four, Upsher County Sheriff's Financial Statement for period of, as listed. Five, Upsher County Sheriff's Financial Statement, bank balance listing, July 2015. Six, Upsher County Sheriff's Settlement, June 30, 2015. Seven, Louis Upsher Animal Control Dog Report, July 2015. Eight, Dog Report from Seth Cutright, Animal Control/Sherman Officer, July 1, 2015 through July 31, 2015. Nine, Cat Report, July 2015. Ten, Louis Upsher Animal Control Facility Adoption/Financial Transactions, July 1, 2015 through July 31, 2015. Eleven, Upsher County 911 Communications Center Report, July 2015 as listed. Twelve, WPU Extension Service Newsletter, August 2015. Thirteen, Agendas and/or Notice of Meetings as listed. Fourteen, Meeting Minutes as listed. Fifteen, Meetings as listed. Sixteen, appointments needed for upcoming as listed. April Keating and Tom Bond, Mountain Lakes Preservation Alliance Representatives of the Upsher County Commission and provided a review of concerns regarding the protection of water resources from harm from the extraction and transport of fossil fuels in Upsher County. Ms. Keating and Mr. Bond presented information and data concerning contamination, safety hazards, methane release, and waste disposal from gas wells and proposed gas pipelines, and provided information about what other communities are doing to protect their resources. James Farrell, Upsher County Office of Emergency Management Director, and John Buck Edwards, OEM Deputy Emergency Manager, appeared before the Commission and provided review and discussion on the proposal for a river access project at the Hampton-Ivan Hope Bridge area. Mr. Farrell and Ms. Edwards provided a PowerPoint presentation which highlighted the advantages of the project. Mr. Farrell advised that the proposed site is a county-owned property, and would provide for a location for fire departments to draw water, a location to place a boom in case of a spill or water contamination emergency, and would provide for river access for canoes and kayaks. When asked what the negatives of the project are, Ms. Edwards and Mr. Farrell only cited a potential trash problem, otherwise could think of none. Mr. Farrell requested to move forward with negotiating a funding source. After discussion on motion by Kerry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved Mr. Farrell's request pending approval of the name of the bounty bond commission. Mr. Farrell provided the name of the funding source to the Commission as confidentially. Kerry Wallace provided an updated life stats report on the master plan document amendment number four concerning the Upsher County Commission Employing Medical Benefits Plan to redefine active employment out of pockets among planned scheduled benefits. J.C. Rafferty provided a review of the Gerbert Life Insurance Company application and schedule for excess loss insurance. After discussion on motion by Kerry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the president to sign the master plan document amendment number four amending the Upsher County Commission Employing Medical Benefits Plan. The 2015 application and schedule for excess loss insurance for Gerbert Life Insurance Company. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all application orders. The Commission approved the following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following donations and/or refunds as listed. The Commission approved the following concession of land tax as listed. The Commission recessed at 11:30 a.m. The Commission attended the meeting of the Upsher County Department Supervisors. The Commission attended the meeting of the Upsher County Policy Board. The Commission reconvened at 2:30 5:00 p.m. The Commission met with David Godlett, Upsher County Prosecutor, to discuss matters concerning county litigation. With now further business, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Kerry Cutright, the Commission adjourned at 8:00 5:00 p.m.
Thank you, Jackie. I appreciate that. On today's agenda, we have a 9:15 appointment.
One correction on the third page on the bottom. J.C. Rafferty would give myself, Kerry Wallace, and by the review of the Gerbert Life Insurance Company.
Are there addition corrections or minutes to the corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, I request a motion to approve the minutes.
Senator.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next we go to the appointments. We have a 9:15 appointment, City Councilmember Ronald Pugh, Presentation of Proclamation Declaring September 1, 2015, as a day to pay honor to and recognize specifically the professional men and women, first responders. At 10:30, we have a bid opening presentation award, Upsher County Sheriff's Vehicles. The solicitation has been advertised. And we have a 1 o'clock show of David H. Kaufman, a public safety meeting, which may be held in executive conference. We have one minute prior to 9:15 by the clock, so we'll continue with items for discussion and action approval. Item number one, we have correspondence from Craig D. Preiser, West Virginia University Extension Service, requesting use of the Courthouse Plaza on September 11, 2015, from 8 o'clock to 3 o'clock p.m. for the members of the Upsher County Community Education Outreach Service Program to hold their annual mini fair. Do I have a motion to approve that request of the Extension Service?
Senator.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. It is now 9:15. Mr. Pugh, a city council member from McCann City, will make an appearance before the Commission for a presentation of proclamation. Ron?
It's a pleasure, gentlemen, to be here on this side of the dais. I'm not sitting up there. It's not often this happens. As you are aware, we're having a 9/11 celebration to honor the first responders in Upsher County. And those first responders include fire departments, emergency medical squad, the CERT team, all the law enforcement agencies, and the Health Net at the airport. And we're asking that you would proclaim, along with the city council, and we'll take care of our next week's meeting, 9/11 as a day of honor and recognition to those responders. I have all the proclamations which I'd like to have you sign.
Would you like to read?
I would read one if I'm not reading. Which part of my glasses do I use?
Well, they're on.
Whereas, Upsher County's first responders include firefighters, emergency medical services, personnel from the Office of Emergency Management, community emergency response team, CERT, Health Net base six, and law enforcement officers who courageously and unselfishly risk their lives daily to protect the safety of our community, visitors passing through our town and county, and our commercial establishments. And whereas, Upsher County's first responders are the first line of defense for the public against all threats, both domestic and foreign, as well as during natural disasters. And whereas, Upsher County's first responders do not hesitate to risk their personal safety in the swift execution of their duties to serve our community 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And whereas, Upsher County's first responders are committed to continued training, skill enhancement, and inter-agency coordination, thereby making them vital members of our community, ready to act on cases of any and all dangers and emergencies. And whereas, authentic acts of compassion and heartfelt admiration from the citizens of our community for these first responders provide them with much-needed and well-deserved encouragement and community support to continue to confront the dangers and uncertain situations they face every day. Now therefore, we do hereby proclaim 11 September, 2015, as a day to pay honor to and recognize specifically the professional men and women we call first responders, and encourage all citizens to take the time to let these men and women and their families know how much we value their service and commitment to our community. This special day will also be an opportunity for the elected leaders of our local government, both city and county, to demonstrate appreciation for the men and women who protect and serve our community as first responders, and an opportunity to say thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation as read by Councilman Pugh?
Senator.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. If I could just have you sign these, I'm going to pick them up at a later date for us to sign.
Would you maybe like to take photographs? Take the pictures down in the city hall?
I'd like to say that this, we'll start about quarter of six, hopefully.
Okay, I'll sign them later this morning.
Flag raising, I'll have the Minnesota Guard come in and do the flag raising and lower on this particular day. And then Spring Street's going to be ripped off, and for members to have their fire trucks, their police cruisers, whatever, and hopefully Frank will fly out the helicopter and land on top of the bike, pull down.
So, six in the morning and six in the evening?
No, six in the evening. Is there two six o'clock's in the day? I didn't.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
So we have a 9:15 meeting, as you tell, we'll have a 10:30 as our next appointment. So we'll continue with items for discussion and action approval. We have a review and signature letter to Paul Chapman, case number 091114-01, regarding a complaint filed with the Upsher County Safe Structures and Sites Board. Specifically, that letter addressed to Mr. Chapman indicates that a complaint was filed in August of 2014 notifying Mr. Chapman that there had been a number of contacts made by certified mail from September 12, 2014 through July 10 of this year with no progress being made on improving the condition of that particular property. Previous correspondence with Safe Structures and Sites Board sent via that certified mail was signed for by Carolyn Postleway and Richard, Carolyn Postleway and Richard Postleway. And basically, we are advising that if corrective action is not taken, the Upsher County Commission will consider providing corrective action to the property. This would result in lien being placed on the property for the amount of cost incurred to bring that property into compliance. No questions of either Commissioner. Is there a motion to authorize the correspondence to be sent to Mr. Chapman?
Senator.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from G. Paul Richter, McCann River Shed Water Association Administrator, requesting a letter of support for Harretts Run Project to the McCann River Watershed Association. This letter is intended to be used in their attempt to obtain an application for funds to the Office of Service Mining Reclamation and Enforcement's Watershed Cooperative Agreement Program to treat acidic mine drainage remediation on Harretts Run. During the past number of years, this organization has received funding and has provided mitigation for four different projects in the same location. So is there a motion to approve county support or recommendation for this grant in connection with the water remediation?
Senator.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Rick Harlow, requesting, at least with the Indian Fire Department, requesting consideration to fill the fire chief vacancy on the Safe Sites Structures, two-year unexpired term set to expire June 30, 2016. Do I have a motion to appoint Chief Harlow to that position?
Senator.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have correspondence from Jonathan S. Tees, Understate Park Superintendent, requesting consideration to fill the vacancy of the Upsher County Convention and Visitors Bureau's three-year term beginning on 2015 and ending 2018. Is there a motion to approve that request?
Senator.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving to items which may require discussion, action, or approval of the Commission, we have Upsher County Solid Waste Authority Community Shridding Event Fly. That shredding event will be on Saturday, September 12, 2015, at 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at the Crossroads Recycling Center, which is located adjacent to the Walmart parking lot. This is a free service available to anyone who has documentation. And I would say people who have checks, if they've been canceled checks, if they've been accumulating, any documentation which they believe would be confidential, such as business or private correspondence, may wish to take advantage of this recycling effort. We certainly would encourage it from the Commissioner's standpoint. We have agendas and notices of meetings. We have meeting minutes. We have meetings of various boards. And we have appointments needed for upcoming boards. One would be the Upsher County Safe Structures and Sites Board meeting, board vacancy, which would be for the 6:30-14, and that is to be appointed.
Those have both been addressed today.
Those have been addressed.
You have filled all of your board vacancies.
Okay, and Upsher County Convention Visitors Bureau, that's also been provided. Okay, so we have all the boards have been, which is good, because normally we have anywhere from six to 10 vacancies. So I appreciate the public's willingness to step up and assist in the various aspects of this responsibilities of various organizations that have a positive impact on the community. Well, we have a next appointment at 10:30, which is our five minutes. We have the next meeting scheduled for us will be September 3 at 9 o'clock here at the County Courthouse. So I suspect for the next five minutes or so, we can pay some bills if we have those invoices, and you can pass me the proclamation if it is decided. I will reconvene this session of the Upsher County Commission for purpose of a bid opening, a presentation of award for Upsher County Sheriff's Vehicles.
We did receive one bid.
Jenkins' Board?
Yes. And it says, "We are pleased to submit the following bid for your consideration, 2006 Explorer four-door. Bid price, $25,624. Waiting your response and looking forward to earning your business." So they provided for the Explorer, but they haven't provided for the sedan. So I would ask that one of you, or I can call and ask why they have only provided a bid for the Explorers. I don't know if they can't provide a bid for the sedan, or what the reason is. And then you would make a decision.
We can accept, however, the bid for an Explorer.
You could, but I'd like you to just wait until we have the information from him.
What's the other?
Would you like to call, or would you like me to call?
You should call as the administrator, because we're the ones that make the decision on the inventory.
The question is, your original request was for two of the SUVs, which would be the Explorers, and one police sedan vehicle. So if they're unable to provide the police sedan vehicle, will you be getting three of the SUVs? That would be my question, because your bid was for three vehicles.
What's the difference in price, and what's the sheriff think about getting three SUVs instead of a sedan? Would be my question.
I wouldn't have an issue with that, buddy. And money-wise, this is just guessing about sitting down, I didn't break any trigger with me. I think we're looking somewhere around $1,500, compared utility to the sedan.
The question I have.
Utility being more.
Estimates we use during budget hearings for the sedan were about $2,400, so that's accurate, around $1,600 increase.
The question I have, though, from a legal standpoint, or a concern about legalities, if we were to go out, if we were to accept and make a decision that we could use three SUVs, would we have to rebid? Because then we give everybody a chance. Or can we accept this bid and then extend it by two more vehicles? I don't know what the legal.
Your RFP reads, "The Upsher County Commission reserves the right to reject any and all bids in whole or in part and waive any infomality during the bidding process. I was not contacted by any other company during the bid process questioning the bid or asking."
Just curious, why they didn't give you a bid or something?
Well, that's why I'm asking you to call.
I'd like to have you call.
Okay. So would you like?
The question is, should we suspend the entire bid process, or should we accept the one offer for the SUV, and then?
I would recess your meeting at this point. Let me call in, get an answer for you, and then you could accept or deny the bid at that point.
Then we will suspend a decision on the vehicle issue.
I don't know if I would suspend it, because it might only take 10 minutes.
Okay, then we'll recess. We'll recess for 15 minutes.
I started with Ron Jenkins, and on the four-door sedans, it's too late to order 2015s, and the specs are not available for the 2016s at this time. He's expecting that to be within the next couple of weeks. So you would have two different options. One, you could order three Explorers, which can be ordered right now, and they would be in within six to eight weeks. Or you could accept two Explorers and postpone your decision on the third until you would be able to get your specs on the sedan for the 2016 sedan.
If the 2015, and I don't know how bad the sheriff's department needs vehicles to get him on the road, but the 2016 will be out when?
He's thinking in a couple of weeks, so I'm in September.
And I don't know how bad the sheriff needs vehicles or whatever, but if you can wait a couple of weeks and get into 2016 versus the 2015, I would really get to 2016.
At that point, I think you will have to re-advertise your bid, because you will be accepting another bid for one vehicle.
Probably not, will be the same price. I was going to ask the price.
I'm sure it's like an increase. And it might increase more than $1,600.
I'm not going to say or tell you I don't need bids.
What's your opinion, I guess, what I'm asking?
I mean, we're talking $1,600 more. If I could work with the Commission, I would just like to go ahead and move forward and get three utility bids.
If the price has went up 5% with the new year models, you'd be looking at $1,281 for an increase of a 15 model to a 16 model.
But we don't know if the state bid price is going to increase or not. We'll just buy that out.
But a year, it's a little bit different than buying it personally. A year, a year doesn't really make any difference, because they're not going to be worth $3,000 when we're through wearing around anyway.
And I agree with that logic. That's true. We all agree. You look at a 216, the vehicle is always worth more than a 215, no matter how you look at it.
And I will say that if it's a difference between $1,200 and $1,600, you're going to have a more than $400 charge from the record office and then a mountain of run this RFP again.
Sure, they win the charges again.
I promise they will.
Well, I have no problem moving ahead, except whatever you other two gentlemen want to do.
Well, I guess the best way to resolve this is there a motion regarding this issue? Is there a motion? The sheriff has indicated he would be willing to take three SUVs at the price that Mr. Jenkins has stated Jenkins wanted to stay.
I have one more question. What did we budget for three vehicles?
Your total budget for the capital law is $76,750, but $20,243 of that is to pay off your last loan payment on the existing loan that you have for Sheriff's Vehicles. So that left you $56,507. So that left you $56,507.
No, we're on five.
So really, it's only a couple hundred dollars. You're within your budget. You actually have remaining $5,000.
So.
So you can use that towards your loan.
So is there a motion then to acquire three SUVs? Would any motion that will be made, if one can be made?
I certainly don't have any problem making that motion. I'm glad that we're buying and purchasing new vehicles from a local business person here, Jenkins' Board, and I said, "Look."
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So we've got three SUVs here.
I appreciate that. And we get, might be here.
Well, it's now 10:40. One, the next appointment with the sheriff is at 1:00. So that'll be about a year. Recession, pace of balance, the vehicles will pay until 1:00.